Look to Apple for the time. I will call this annual budget town meeting for the town of Kent on May 31st to order at 9:15. And the first order is 7:15. I'm going on military time, I apologize. I will entertain a motion to appoint a moderator. I see Karen Iannucci has got her hand up.
I make a motion to nominate Gonzo Garcia for moderator.
Thank you Karen, I need a second.
I'll second.
Steven Gonzo. Is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Fantastic. Gonzo Garcia, our moderator, very much appreciate you doing this duty tonight. I will turn the meeting over to you.
Jane, thank you all.
Oh, and sorry. Just very briefly, we are obviously missing one-third of our team tonight. And Glenn Sanchez asks if I would read this to the folks here. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend the special annual budget meeting due to a death in my immediate family that requires me to be out of town. Thank you Glenn Sanchez.
Hello, town of Kent.
Hey.
Hey, uncle.
Hello. The meeting proceedings are being recorded, as you all heard that nice chime. Assuming anything said will be picked up by the microphones right above our heads and therefore recorded. If you need to have a conversation, please step out in the hallway. When there is an opportunity for discussion during a motion and you would like to be heard, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized. When you are called on, please come up to the podium, state your full name for the record. Discussion will be limited to one minute per person. If possible, please put your cell phone or mobile devices on silence. And as always, please remember, this is our neighborhood and we want to respect each other and respect the process. So now, I will entertain a motion made to waive the reading of the agenda.
Second. Next.
Wait, who? I didn't get the first person.
You want to call on Matt.
Some of the bad news. I make a motion to waive the reading of the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manis. Second motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion passed. I will now entertain a motion on agenda item number one. Connor.
I make a motion to authorize the Board of Selectment or other town officials in accordance with the Kent Policy Administration Manual to apply for, accept, and expend funds or grants, including but not limited to Town 8 Road for general municipal purposes for the fiscal year 2023-2024.
Do I have a second? Stay in, nice and loud.
Second.
Please. Your house.
She needs to make sure she sees you, that's it. The boss behind, I feel there's heat. I'll step over this room. Is there any discussion? Call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number two. Another prayer.
I make a motion to authorize the Board of Education or other town officials to apply for, accept, and expend funds, whether in several state or other funds or grants for educational purposes for the fiscal year 2023-2024.
Do I have a second?
I second, Alyssa Winter.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes. I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number three.
I make a motion to appropriate from the reserve fund for capital and non-recurring expenditures and amount equal to the expenditures approved in the fiscal year 2023-2024, pounds of the five-year capital plan.
Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have a hand, I'm sorry. Go back to the... Yes. Motion passes.
What's your opinion? The Wester End of the district.
I will entertain a motion on agenda item number four.
I make a motion to consider and act upon the recommendations of the Board of Finance for the five-year capital plan.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Manis. Is there any discussion? I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number five.
I make a motion to consider and act upon the recommendations of the Board of Finance for fiscal year July 1, 2023, to give 30, 2024, and future appropriate money to deprive the expenses of the town in accordance with set budget, as finally accepted and established as part of the Board of Selectment operating budget, formerly at $906,668. Transferred to capital on U N 08, 104, 1, sorry, 1,115. Transferred to dollar fund, 7,500. Appropriations for scattered legal expenses, 20,000. Debt service, 8,906. Appropriations for current capital projects, 1,67,245. Board of Education operating budget, 1,904,047. These one budget, 2,203,953. Total expense, 14,600,444, 24,244.
Do I have a second? He's anticipating some speaking. Is there any discussion? Thank you, Ms. Harrington. Please come over to the board, sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Lynn, still just state your name, thanks Lynn.
Uh, Lynn Harrington. I would like to make a motion to amend the budget. I would like to make a motion to decrease line item number 325 under Park and Rec hourly employees by $41,600, removing the full-time recreation leader. I request this vote be taken by paper ballot.
For the motion to be suppressed...
All right, I need to do this anyway.
It can't be combined.
You can second it?
After, I think you have to separate them. Two motions.
You have to... You can second it, but it's going to have to be... Because it can't be...
And then I need...
Hang on.
But just for clarification, it can't be two items in the same motion. So the deduction is the first part, but then the second part on the paper ballot, can't be the two in the same.
And then the motion for requesting a paper ballot has to be done before the motion and the main motion is seconded. It can't be as part of an amendment because it's not part of the main motion that it be in any other, in another form, basically.
Like, so you just have to make it two motions, correct? Then you can make a... First motion and second, and then...
Hang on, hang on.
I just can make the first motion, right? And then the second one, well, we were told that it has to be made before the item five comes up. However, it could come up later as well. Then make the first motion.
Remove her, her...
Second.
So making a motion to a paper ballot first?
No, that one had to be made before the first motion gets made on the reading, so that part.
You say a motion without that last line? Same person, Lynn Harrington. I would like to make a motion to amend the budget. The motion will be to decrease the line item number 325 under Park and Recreation hourly employees by $41,600, removing the full-time recreation leader.
Do I have a second?
Second.
State your name, please. Any discussion on that? Yeah, sorry, give a second, thank you, sir. Hearing none?
Just to clarify my motion. I've spoken this several times at BOF and BOS meetings. I don't feel that at this time, another full-time person is warranted. This department already has two part-time assistants and this will be a full-time above, over and above the two part-time assistants. I think that we need more time to come across something, to, you know, make sense of this. We need to have some clarity on what the parking director actually does, maybe some accountability shown to the public so that we have a better idea of what they're doing and if a full-time person is warranted. I do not feel at this time that they are.
Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote, yes.
My name's Lori. She's almost, if you know that I, many of you know that I served for 10 years as first class member of the town of Kent. I support the reduction in the budget for this line item. I was a mother of two who used Emory Park non-stop every summer. I am ashamed, frankly, and appalled that we are a town that cannot teach its kids to swim. We don't have a place for our senior citizens to swim. And swimming is one of the best activities for seniors imaginable. And instead, we pump up the budget with more staff and don't seem to address the real issues. I'm not saying it's not justified someday, but right now, I don't see it. Just don't see the thinking that we should do yet. Let's take our time, make sure we have the programs, make sure we have what our people need. Do the study, it's an integral thing. Figure it out, but take our time. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate the discussion, like what you're mentioning, but we want to stick to just the actual item. I understand, we're not going to go into the other details, yes?
Well, that's, sorry. It was in response to that because we do want for that.
No, I know.
Yes, so that's not part of it.
Happy to call for a vote. All those in favor of the amended reduction of... $41,600 for line item 325, Park and Rec. Full-time Park and Rec. Position? May I? Any opposed?
May.
That's the paper ballot. I understand perfectly well what your guys', what your all's desire is. For me to get there, I have to go through two more steps. One more, we'll go through a hand count, so what I'll ask is, who are my... First one?
The registered ones.
I'm going to split the room in half. John, choose a side, boys. Sorry.
Which side is next?
That side is the side we're on that, right there.
Okay.
Thank you, my friend.
And what's the motion that we're voting on?
So we're voting on the, on the, the motion...
The reduction.
Reduction of that.
For the reduction.
For the reduction. So what we'll do now is versus, no, we're not going to do an auditory, we're going to do a hand raising, so. What are, who are the two, who's up here? Oh, sorry. So what we'll do now is, we have two people that are going to come in and help and they're going to give us the count, bring it over. If it can't be decided that way, then we'll go through paper. It's not that I'm against the paper, I'm absolutely in favor of digging into the paper, but I also want to make sure we speed up the time, yes?
Yeah. I'm glad we have a vote on the table, ladies. Exactly. Could I, could I have some clarification on exactly what we're voting on now?
Absolutely, I'll repeat again, so there is an amendment, uh, an amendment, sorry, to the current motion item number five, which is asking to reduce line item 325 of the budget to say, a reduction of $41,600 for hourly employees, a line item called hourly employee. That's what, we have, we have that one that's now being asked to be. So, thank you, guys. So I'm going to ask you to make a count on this side of hands, and then you don't want to do a count of this side. So, all those in favor, please raise your hand and keep them up until it's counted.
Mine, one more time, say.
All in favor for the amended motion for line item 325 for the reduction, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your hand. For the reduction, the motion passes 53 to 46. Any continued discussion on item number five? Any continued discussion on item number five?
So, why...
Sorry, your name, please.
That's what I was saying. Lori Hanson was on the lower road. I was a part of the subcommittee to help hire the new Park and Rec director, went through the entire process, and I find out in line that the person to talk about and raise this motion, we distinctly talked about how there's never been an assessment of this job and how many hours went into this position. So it really...
I have to cut you off because this has to be about the budget, especially if you have a motion about the budget, except not about the narrative or the other stuff, all that was taken care of once in the previous meeting, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, it's...
If it's about, judge about...
Especially for a person that hired him, to now back up against him because she's lying, judge.
Okay, really?
Please.
My name is Barbara Dietz. I guess it's just more questions, sorry. Because we are kind of a last-minute thrown together, the vote was somewhat close. Some of us can't have our partners here having a second vote for those with families. Is there a way to make a motion to now turn it since it was so close into a paper ballot and take it back to the town?
A clarification, unfortunately.
No? No. Well, you know what, there's a, there's a larger answer to that. Any item that a town identifies as a concern, so your question, the answer is no, but any item that a town considers a concern, that's what the function of a petition is, you bring it forward, you get it signed, you bring it forward to your Board of Selectment, and then you go through the process to request that item to be brought to a town meeting. So I don't want to say no to you, but your specific question, the answer is no. Nothing here today can just easily be brought to a paper ballot. But if in the event that you felt that there was this scenario and/or anything else in the budget, that after this budget is passed, you as an individual have the right to bring that forward via petition, via the Board of Selectment, I hope, through that process. I hope. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jared, I'm the Director of Parks and Rec, for those who don't know me.
Point of order.
I'm, I'm...
The vote's done. Sorry, somebody else just... I just, hold on a second, is it about something else?
Yes, it's directly related to this.
To no, to what? Not, well, not the amendment, the amendment, the amendment to the, to the budget.
To the budget.
To something else?
After, to the budget after the amendment, that that motion puts us without enough money to pay our after-school and our camp director, so I just want to throw that out there. So we now have not enough money to cover the two positions.
Any other discussion? We have a second on the table for item five after the, it's been amended. So, excuse me, sorry. So we do have the original motion on item number five. That was, we have that motion and it's been seconded, so that kind of costs a little, and that would be adjusted.
Adjusted, which part is?
With the reduction amount, which makes the new total expense budget number 14,60824. I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
That's more, right?
41,000 less.
I'm sorry.
Repeated total, the, the motion for agenda item number five with the reduction, the total expense number now comes to 14,60824. I'll call for a vote on item number five. All those in favor? All those opposed? How can I help?
And I'm having a fine support, so I, not a good thing.
How can I help you, because I just, you know?
So, just can I make a point of order? This is a very, very procedural meeting. We have a main motion, someone came up and made an amendment to that main motion, we have to vote, we voted on that amendment, we go back to the main motion, which had a new bottom dollar, and the moderator is in the middle of a vote. It is, it is very late in the game to need clarification. When he calls for discussion is when we all need to raise our hand and ask the questions and get a discussion.
It didn't have a discussion, there was no opportunity to have a discussion. There's no main motion.
Would we please have a clarification of how that dollar figure was applied?
Clarification on which dollar figure?
You have to come up to the podium. Got to come up to the podium, thanks, Rich.
Richard, Barbara, I just, we need to know exactly what we're talking about in terms of dollars. Because the amount, the total amount that was before was 40,000, now you're saying 14.
No. The total amount, so for clarification, the total amount before the amendment was 14,642,424 dollars. There was amendment and then a vote. And that reduced it by 41,000. So now we're continuing...
41,600? 41,600?
41,600, sorry. 41,600. So that puts us now at a total expense of 14,6824 for the full budget.
Is that include that? If you want to ask a question, you've got to raise your hand and be recognized by the moderator and then come up to the podium.
Does that include the benefits or are we just talking salary?
The motion was just to reduce the dollar...
Salary. Is there any further, I'm sorry, is there any further discussion on that point? Yes, sir. Come on up. About the total budget, correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Steve Penner, there was a main motion made, then there was an amendment to the main motion, which was given time to have a discussion, and then that was given a time to vote. There was no discussion on the main motion. It was then called for a vote without any discussion of the main motion.
I believe I did ask for a vote.
Steven, that's, that is right now, right now, we are in the process for open discussion for the budget that now includes the approved amendment.
Okay.
The motion's open, it's seconded, that allows anybody to come forward to make that motion of an amendment.
It's my understanding that we've just reduced the Park and Rec budget by 41,000 dollars in total.
It was specific, it was specific to a line item?
Yes.
Okay, so not...
They reduced it by 41,000.
Not the whole department, that line which then, yes, does...
That line helped fund an after-school program for the town of Kent.
We, we can't, and again...
According to Jared, he just stood up and said it helps fund the after-school program as well as Camp Kent.
Steve, I appreciate it.
In the town of Kent.
Thanks. I just got to keep this...
Now we have zero, so that's what we're voting on now, though. We're voting, we're possibly voting on eliminating the after-school.
That we already voted on. Now we're voting on the total budget.
I think people need to be clear what we're voting on.
Right, we're voting now on the total...
I don't think people are clear on it.
On the total, we're voting now on the total budget. We're not voting on the amendment that was already presented and voted upon.
I would just like, Al Gutierrez-Halsley, I would just like clarification on Darlene's point about the petition. So, for example, should this item get passed yea or nay, the item about petitioning can happen regardless of which way the vote goes, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's something that there's a vote process, step one, step two, step three, which follows how to apply for the petition, how to formally, the questions that came to the signatures, there's a full process of which I...
Understood, and I know this isn't the form, but it seems very unfortunate, there seem to be people with children and without a school age, so that's...
Any other discussion?
Can I, I'd like to point a clarification to the comment that was made on the floor. Please note that in that hourly employee line, there is still left 19,200 dollars in the point that Steven's making to make sure that people understand that that line was reduced by the 41,600, but it still does leave 19,200 to be managed.
Jen Duncan, South Kent, Rhode Island. So, guys, I think we're having discussion on something that we've already voted on, right? We voted on, there was, the main motion was made, the amendment, and it was seconded, right? The amendment was made, that passed, but then you called for a vote on...
Main.
On the main motion. We've already voted, but now we're having discussion about it.
We didn't finish voting.
No, we voted on the amendment.
I was going to call for, I was calling for the main, and then...
I think you did already.
I voted for the main, people said they had...
Thomas, where?
Come on up. Okay, Matthew Winter, as a point of order, this, we can, we're allowed to have a discussion about the main motion, right? So we've had that vote, now we can discuss, and the question is whether we want to vote on the amended... on the amended budget, right? So it's perfectly reasonable for members of the public to come up and express some concern and ask for clarification on the motion. So, I would like some clarification now about what is left in the park and rec budget. I'm not sure that we're going to get there tonight.
I.
I know you said, but.
That one.
What, what, what is included in that and what's, and what is covered by that eighteen thousand? That's, that's still left in there. And I know, I know some of the comments that were made were somewhat out of order because they were, there was a, it was after the vote on that, on the amendment. But I would like personally some clarification on what is now left in the budget because we didn't have a chance. We've been talking about the budget for months and months and months, some of, most of us have a good sense of what's there. But I want to know what's there left in the park and rec budget in Kent, that is, is there enough?
I can answer that, you'll have to have me call you, because I need my leader. I think it will pick you up. Okay. We're differing, this is part of our purpose, she's our town treasurer.
So to answer your specific question, nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars is comprised of after-school counselors, a hundred and eighty days, for three counselors at fifteen dollars an hour, for eight thousand, one hundred dollars. For Camp Kent, that will be two staff people for thirty days, eight hours each, at sixteen dollars an hour, for a total of seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. For sports camp, that's two staff people for ten days, six hours each, at sixteen dollars an hour, one thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. And then for programs and events, one staff person, twenty-five days, four hours a day, at fifteen dollars an hour, for one thousand, five hundred dollars. Those four dollar totals that I just gave you add up to nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars. That's what's left in the line after the amendment. For staffing, aside from the dark.
Any further discussion after that point of clarification?
Thank you.
Thank them, thank you. I'll call for a vote on the amended budget. All those in favor of the amended budget now standing at fourteen million, six hundred thousand, eight hundred twenty-four, please say aye. All opposed? Our entertaining motion on agenda item number six. Bonnie.
I make a motion on the request of the Board of Education on April, twenty twenty-three, upon recommendation of the Board of Finance on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, termination of the completed KCS windows project in the capital fund and transfer of the residual funding totaling twelve thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-six cents to the KCS roof project and the capital fund.
Do I have a second? Say your name loud for the.
None.
Thanks, John. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Our entertaining motion on agenda item number seven. Thank you, Ms. McHale.
Carolyn, Kent. I make a motion on the request of the Board of Education on April fifth, twenty twenty-three, and upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, termination of the sidewalk paving project and five-year capital plan consisting of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars in fiscal year twenty-four, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars in fiscal year twenty-five, and one hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-five in fiscal year twenty-six and transfer of those appropriations to the KCS roof project and the five-year capital plan.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Mr. Linderman, is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Our entertaining motion on agenda item number eight.
Catherine Backrack. I make a motion on the request of the Board of Education on April fifth, twenty twenty-three, and upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, to appropriate seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and five dollars of bridge funding to be taken from the capital reserve and deposited to the Kent Center School Roof Project and the capital fund. Upon approval of the bridge funding, the capital appropriation is already in place on the five-year capital plan project totaling seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and five dollars will be encumbered and used to replenish the capital reserve.
Do I have a second? Ms. McHale. Thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes? Thank you. Once this meeting is adjourned, the Board of Finance will be commencing their special meeting. You're welcome to stay, but if you are not, please hold your conversations until you are outside so they can proceed. Before I, um, I want to thank you for adopting me and my family in this, in this community. Um, I'm sorry, probably completely inappropriate and you can get mad at me anybody once. But honestly, this is the place I've lived the longest in my life and the place I consider home. And I thank you, you guys are amazing people, and I wish you all the best.
It's as long as I can say thank you to God, so I know that he has touched pretty much every life in this room and this lady's going to miss Pedro. I know a lot of people in this room are going to miss Pedro. He's been a longtime board member on the Board of Ed and has done great work there and has always been really engaged in, in our community stuff, thanks.
Thank you. Meeting, this meeting adjourned at seven fifty-three PM, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McHale. All those in favor, no.